...meeting tonight, January 12th at 7:00. Unfortunately, I don't have a quorum to vote on anything, so I'm still waiting for people to meet. But I will, in the meantime, I'll read the remote participation.
Yeah, I think it's somebody who's not muted on the call.
As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Wendy Steinhillberg. Ron Brooks. Nicholas Lynch. Steve Chambers. Todd Corain. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town planter Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Staff assistant Rachel Pressley.
Yes.
And I know Darlene is not here tonight. Good evening. This is the meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board.
John, it's Ronnie Brooks.
Okay, so there's two of us now, Ron. I don't know where everybody else is.
There's only two on the meeting?
What's that?
There's only two of us at the meeting?
So far from the planning board. I don't know where Wendy is, I don't know where Steve is, I don't know where Todd is. That's attending this meeting, mute their mics for a second, please.
Mike must have taken over.
Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Town Planning Board of Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which is posted with agenda materials for this meeting is on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the planning board is convened by remote participation for the public only. Although some members of the planning board are physically located in the selectmen's meeting room in Town Hall, those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with Governor Baker's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, please call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477. Or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/133-747477. The remote access information is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Recording those members of the planning board, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to share your screen. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of the body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before I do that, when I finish reading this announcement, I will take another roll call. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of the members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If you respond, please wait. Chair yields the floor to you, and you state your name before speaking. Other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. The Chair will ask, first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each of you to agree to the vote. If any vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So I'm going to take another roll call right now to see if anybody else is here besides myself and Ron Brooks. Wendy Steinhillberg. Nicholas Lynch. Steve Chambers.
President.
Todd Corain.
President.
Yeah, we have a quorum. So first item on the list is approval not required, Craig Falkingren, 43 Eddy Street. And I'm sure everybody's read the letter and has looked at the plan. They're just taking a little bump out onto the, I believe it's his parents' property to capture the outbuilding or shed. Is anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, I'm Craig Falkingren.
Is there anything you want to clue us in on here, or is this just a basic, the way it's drawn on the plan?
It's just basic on the plan. It is my parents' house, and I live next door, and we just want to swap a piece of land, or take a piece of land to keep the outbuilding for future.
I don't seem to have a problem, but let me go through the people that are attending from the planning board. Ron, do you have any comment?
No comments, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Steve, do you have any comment?
No issues, no comments.
Todd, do you have any issues?
No issues, no comments.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding this issue? Being none, may I have a motion to approve?
John, it's Ronnie, I'll make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
And myself, is it aye, it is a vote. So after this has been approved, I believe we have to sign the plans, Adam.
Correct.
When you guys get a chance, get up here to the Town Hall or call Adam, and he'll come down to the toll booth outside. The list today is applicant Jeff Gervais, Gervais Mechanical Services LLC, requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.5.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a plumbing and heating and air conditioning contractor to occupy a currently vacant building of the property located at 200 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., MAP 18, parcel 36. And for those that didn't know, it's the old KG Sign Building. Does anyone from the planning board have a comment? Ron?
I have none. Do we need to open the meeting?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
Steve Chambers, I'll make a motion to open.
Okay, Ron, I'll take yours as a second. The hearing is now open.
I'll call, please.
Jeez. Okay, Ron, are you in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. The hearing is now open. Ron, do you have any comments regarding this?
No, I don't, John.
Okay, Steve, do you have any comments?
It appears to be mostly interior fit-out work and same usage, so no other comments.
Okay, and Todd, do you have a comment?
No comments.
Does anyone from the public have a comment regarding this, this property?
To the Chair, I think the applicant's on the call, so...
Applicant's on the call.
Yeah.
Does anyone from Gervais have anything to say, or want to give us a rundown, or want to let it stand as?
Not at this time, no.
Pardon me?
No comments for me.
Okay.
To the Chair, I would request, if you're going to close the hearing and make a decision on this, you include as a condition hard copies of the plan that you see on your screen. Have you seen hard copies as of yet?
Okay, so in order for me to close the hearing, we have to make a stipulation that we need hard copies of this plan as drawn and submitted to Adam, and it has to be recorded under Worcester Registry of Deeds, doesn't it?
No, I need a copy on file, the Town Clerk needs a copy on file.
Full-size drawings, correct?
Full-size drawings.
So we need two copies.
Correct.
Did you get that, Jeff?
Yes, we already submitted that. If you guys didn't receive it, we can re-submit that to you, we have those.
Okay. So based on that condition, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion, John.
May I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself is an aye, it is a vote. We're good, right?
I need a motion to approve that.
Oh, I need a, yeah, a motion to approve the plan as submitted?
I'll make that motion to approve the plan as submitted, provided the two copies be submitted for file.
Thank you, Steve. May I have a second?
Todd, I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor with the stipulation or the condition, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself is an aye, it is a vote, it is approved, and good luck, and I'm glad to see that you're moving in there.
Thank you very much. I'll drop those off first thing in the morning, I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And to you, thanks.
Next on the list is applicant JT Acquisitions LLC regarding site plan approval under section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for construction of two buildings on currently vacant land with landscaping and stormwater management improvements on property located at, excuse me, 15 Technology Drive, Auburn, Mass., MAP 42, parcel 40. We did receive your narrative back. Those have to be re-submitted to Graves for their input on how you answer their concerns. Is there anyone here from JT Acquisitions that would like to have anything to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Todd Broder on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Todd.
Good evening. I think on the phone or on this platform here, Justin Eisner and Tim Johnson from JT Acquisitions are also here, and Jay DuBois from JT Engineering. Yes, we submitted revised plans to Adam, I think, late last week. We had some late coming comments from both the fire department and the engineering department, which we were looking to address. So we have handled a number of those issues. I would like to, you know, take a few minutes to discuss those items. I do realize that Graves Engineering issued their review, and I have not seen a follow-on letter from them in regards to the revised plans, and I think, you know, we can talk about that in a minute, but I do think it makes sense to discuss the other department comments, and then if there are any further comments or feedback from the board so that we could integrate those, if needed, into any kind of revision that might need to go from there.
Todd, I don't have, I'm just being handed the other comments, so it's the first I've seen them.
Are you talking about DPW and fire?
DPW and fire.
Or engineering, rather.
I mean, I had the DPW on, but I never had the fire one.
Okay, well, if I could walk you through, I think I can make sense of it, and it's important because we want to make sure we're kind of running in the right direction here. So with regard to the fire department, you can see from, if Adam handed you the letter, you know, there were a couple of buckets of issues that they had initially with their letter that they sent to us, or email that they sent to us on January 8th. And it was, in the first instance, a concern about the width of the area between the two buildings, and we realized that, and we will be able to address that once building number two comes online, if it does come online. The plan right now, as we discussed, is to only build building number one. We wanted to show building number two to start to identify any of these issues, but we realized that, you know, building number two is not going to be built at this time. We don't have the right amount of parking, and this issue also plays into it. So the distance between the two buildings shows as 18 feet, and the department would like to see that be 20 feet if building number two becomes a reality. But being that building number one is the only building to be constructed, they're, you know, obviously satisfied that, they're not concerned about the width between a building that doesn't exist. So that was one of their concerns. The second concern was the ability to navigate throughout the site, and particularly the rear corner of building number one, to be able to access the rear of the building, but since building two is not being constructed at this time, they don't feel that there are any access restrictions that come into play. And the third issue was, you know, an obligation to meet fire suppression code and sprinkler the building because of the size, and I think that's, you know, more of a code issue than a site design issue, and so, you know, we could certainly work with them on that and abide by the provisions that need to be abided by. So at the end of the day, there was correspondence from Captain Moore, and actually today, that does confirm, yes, from his email, this is from his email, yes, the plan is acceptable if only one building is built. So I think we've alleviated their concerns with a one-building design. I can't say the same for the two-building design, but we will deal with that, you know, in phase two.
If there's even...
That was...
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so that's kind of the fire department for right now, and I'm happy to discuss that further, but it feels like it's sort of, you know, a stamp on that approval at this point from them.
But we still need the stamp from Graves, that you've addressed all the issues they brought up, so we can't really approve or disapprove anything tonight. But I have a, I'm going to put this before the Board and see if anybody there has any questions before I start with mine. Ron, do you have any questions regarding this?
No, not at this time, John.
Steve?
Yep, so if you're not currently planning for that second building, it's more of a design issue for our site plan approval, would it be better for us to not have it on there and not raise these questions and approve what you're planning to build? I think I'd like to see that and alleviate some of this confusion, and then when they're ready for the second building, come back again.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly take it off the plan if that makes more sense.
Todd, do you want to...
We wanted to get a handle on what the issues may be if building two went up, that's why we did it this way, and to be, quite honestly, to be a little bit transparent as to the interest of the applicant. So we didn't want there to be, you know, people to feel surprised that, you know, we came back in nine months or a year and said, oh, here's building number two, and we never talked about it in the first instance.
I appreciate that. I just, I think going, like, now that we've seen it, I think it would alleviate, but I don't know what the other board members feel.
We can take it off, that's not a problem.
Are you all set, Steve?
That's all I had, John.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Todd, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, so it's up to me right now, before I put it out to the public, but instead of removing the plan for the building on the left, I would put it in the darkness of, like, the parking spaces, just a light shadow highlight with a light note off to the side, maybe, maybe possible future building. But my question is, in that area, what's the surface going to be between now and if and when you ever build a building? I doubt if you're going to pave that whole area.
Sure. No, I don't believe so. I don't know, Jay, if he's, if Jay's on the line, I think we talked about this at the last meeting and had a conversation about it being, you know, prepared, but probably left in a gravel state, or, you know, it would not be paved as a final application pavement, anyway.
I believe in an industrial park area or industrial building application, you can't have stone, and you can't have gravel. So my suggestion would be to loam and seed it. And it also reduces your impervious amount on the lot. And you put picnic tables out there for people to have lunch on or whatever, but I don't think you can leave it stone or gravel. Secondly, up in the upper right-hand corner toward the northeast side, there's a note for snow storage all along the hallway, the whole north side. When that melts, where does the water run? It can't run out to the next property. You're going to have, I believe you have to grade it down to the proposed, down near the proposed trash enclosure, there should be a catch basin there to catch this water or grade it over to the catch basin at the east side. You can't have it drained into the other property.
I'll have to defer to the engineer. Jay, are you on the call?
Yes, yeah, I'm here. Yep, Jason DuBois, DC Engineering. So the back of the property basically slopes uphill on the western half of the property. It, you know, it slopes up towards the Mass Turnpike property, and behind building one, it slopes, you know, pretty much in the direction of the infiltration basin. So, you know, whatever doesn't come out into the parking lot on the western half of the property will make it to the infiltration basin on the eastern side of the property.
Right, but even if that goes behind that property line, if that goes to the Mass Pike easement, you can't just let your water run on the Mass Pike easement. I don't think they'd approve that. You'd have to control the water supply, whether it's an attic catch basin and take it down to, you know, the infiltration basin or whatever, but you can't let it run on the other person's property, no matter what the state...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think with the topography that it would go over the line. I think it would stay on our property.
Well, I'd like to see some contours to the west of that, just to prove your point. I think that would be good for everybody, even the building department, and even for Bill. So moving along...
I can certainly highlight the contours, but they are on there right now, currently.
Well, there's contours on your property, there's no contours beyond the property line. So I don't know what that is.
Okay, I can, yeah, I can extend them further, but, okay.
You only need a couple, just to show it goes uphill. And then, on your oil-water separator, can you tell me the plan, where the vent's going to go for that?
For the building floor drains?
I know what, I know what...
Is that the...
How are you going to vent the structure? Where does that vent come out? Detail, it comes right out the side.
I would imagine they would put, I would imagine they would put vents either up the side of the building, or they would just run it through the, through the, you know, the roof of the building.
Yeah, that would be nice to be shown on the plan. A note saying either, you know, strap to the outside of the building or through the roof.
Okay.
I believe that would require a trap before or right after, before it goes out the building, you can have a vent. Now, I was looking at your pole detail on drawing D-2, but I think I figured it out that the, from the pipe to the ground surface is roughly 24 inches, and then the total height of the base is 51 inches. Your pole's not that high, anyway. Not what I could read with a magnifying glass, anyway. But I thought electric had to be deeper than 24, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe 24 is correct. That's all I had for questions. Does anyone from the public have any comment on this piece of land property that's going to be developed? Being done. Todd, do you have anything else to say?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, I'm sorry, just didn't want to miss this. I do have a couple of other items to discuss. One is, you may have just been handed it, but we did get a letter from the engineering department. I think it was dated January 6th, we got it on the 7th. We attempted to, we did communicate with the engineer who signed on the letter, and he had a couple of different items as comments, but he did, after discussion with Jason in our engineering team, did issue a second letter dated today, which really boiled the comments down to one item. And I'm not sure he's had the benefit of it yet, but I just did want to point out that there would be a responsibility to have an additional test pit witnessed in the area of the infiltration basins in order to satisfy, you know, the town that the condition was as indicated previously, inappropriate for that area. So I did want to point out that, you know, DPW and engineering have now reviewed the plan as well, in addition to the conversation we just had about the fire department. And the last two items are with regard to waivers on this particular application. With the application, we did request a lighting plan waiver, and our thought was, you know, this is a site that won't be very heavily lit at all. In fact, you can see from the revised plan that there were really just a couple of wall packs on there on the front and the rear of the building. There are no, I don't believe there are any, and Jay can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there are any lighting poles proposed in the parking field, and as you know, this is an industrial area, backs up to Mass Turnpike property, and then the Mass Turnpike itself, and is otherwise surrounded by industrial property, which just seems like a little bit overkill to have, you know, put together a plan in that regard. We understand the requirements, and I don't think that this, you know, proposal would violate those requirements. violate those requirements in any way, but so we did, we did request a waiver, and I would, I guess, appreciate before we, you know, continue on, you know, for another hearing, to know if that is something that the board would be willing to do. Additionally, Graves pointed out that there is a provision in the bylaw that requires an architect, a landscape architect, to sign up on a landscape plan, and the threshold is a 10,000 square foot building, which we don't have, we have 9,600 square feet, or 40 parking spaces, and we do with this new plan, I believe, have 43 parking spaces to be compliant with the requirements of the bylaw. So, you know, a strict reading would be that we would need that plan, and I did not request that waiver previously, and I would like to do so at this point, I can provide a written request if needed, but I would love to understand if the board would be willing and able to grant such a waiver as well. And those two items are obviously, you know, thinking about if we're coming back in two weeks looking for a chance to wrap this up, you know, I wouldn't, I guess I just wouldn't wanna be surprised at that meeting that those things were required.
Let me put this before the board again, then, Todd. Ron, do you have any comment about lighting?
Uh, I wanna ask Todd, Todd, the way that the lights are, can they, will they be shining on, like, the westbound traffic in the turnpike? I can't quite picture how high this is, but is there a chance that they could be reflecting into the cars, or is it away enough that they won't be able to see the lights?
Yeah, so, if Jay's still on, I don't, Jay, did you put a detail on the plan?
Yeah, there's a six-foot light pole detail.
Yep.
So, you know, I don't think that they'd be, it would be reflecting out over the property lines anywhere.
Isn't the Mass Pike higher than your building?
The lights, those are only six feet high?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And there's only two of them.
Is there any lighting on the building?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve, do you have any comment?
I did misspeak then, I'm sorry, there are, Jay suggesting there are a couple of light poles on the plan, I think I said there weren't any, so I apologize.
Can you point out the light poles on the plan?
It looks like there's one...
What page?
On the east side of the parking.
Yeah.
As you come in the eastern entrance, there's one around the curve, and then there's one on the, you know, complete eastern side of the parking area.
What page are the plans?
Uh, sheet number three. The S1, site plan.
The S1?
Yes.
So, please tell me where the lights are again, because they're not, I don't believe they've been flagged out as light poles on the plan.
So, if you come in the eastern entrance, there's a light pole pretty much straight ahead, and there's a call-out, it says proposed light C detail in that area, and there's a second light pole further up the parking lot, almost directly across the way the two handicap spaces are. And those dash lines that protrude out are the illumination to show that it's zero at the property lines.
So, there's only two light poles?
Two light poles, yes.
Okay. Is anybody else, Steve, do you have any comment?
No, I wouldn't object to the waiver.
Todd?
Uh, no, I just had a question on the clarification for the lights, but they've now pointed them out, I do not object to the waiver.
John, I have one other question for Todd.
Absolutely.
But you wanna, you wanna request to waive the landscaping plan, but do you plan to do any landscaping?
Yeah, so, there is landscaping shown on this particular plan that's on the screen, you can see some trees.
I don't have, I don't have it in front with me, so...
Okay, I can describe it a little bit, there are, I believe, 13 trees scattered throughout the kind of exterior of the parking areas, and then several, I'll call them clumps of, you know, low, lower lying bushes and, you know, something for decoration, I guess, if you will. And there is a 10-foot strip surrounding, you know, in front of the parking areas in between Technology Drive and the site, which would be, you know, landscaped in addition to, you know, the areas that are gonna be a little more natural, like the detention basin and whatnot.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this is Todd, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. In the letter from the engineering department on landscaping, they called out your use of the Crimson King maples and requested that you replace them with a different tree, do you plan to do that?
Yeah, and the new plan shows, I believe, it's honey locusts instead of the originally proposed trees.
Okay, on the plan I have, it still shows the Crimson King maple, so I probably have an older version.
The revised, yeah, the revised plans that went in show the new tree.
For the chair?
Anyone else?
So, it looks like you guys do have landscaping shown on here, you're just looking for the waiver for having a landscape architect stamp the plan. So, if they're, if they're accurate with the changes that were recommended, again, I wouldn't object to a waiver for that, for the overage of two parking spots, myself, but as long as they're reflective of the comments that were just discussed.
Todd, do you have anything to add?
No, I can, thank you, sorry.
Okay, Ron, you all set?
Yes, I'm all set.
Okay, my question is, on your response letter, on response number 15 on page two of your letter, it appears to me that you don't wanna add one tree.
Um, I think, and Jay, if he's, sorry, I keep asking if Jay's still on the call because he had a, he had another hearing in another municipality, kind of going on at the same time, so... I'm here, I'm okay. Yeah, so as far as that, I did add an additional tree, 'cause his note said that there wasn't one additional tree required, so I did add one from the previous plan.
Okay, 'cause the way you wrote it in your response, it pretty much said you weren't. You actually cited that the, you know, surrounding buildings don't have as much landscaping as you. Well, in my opinion, it doesn't really matter, because those buildings were built long ago when the rules have changed. We're trying to make everything nice in the town. So, I didn't think adding a tree was too much, but as long as you're gonna add it, I'm fine. And then...
Yeah, we added the tree.
Your comment 18, I got confused on which drainage basin, which basin goes to what? What goes to basin two, what goes to basin one?
So, the idea was to send as much water as possible to the eastern basin? So, Building 2, you know, if built, would have a roof drain that would flow to that eastern basin, only because the area was, you know, it was pretty tight on the western side of the site, so I was trying not to send any more water that direction, you know, that I didn't need to. So, in order to make the numbers work, I had to take that building roof and send it to the eastern basin, and that's what that six-inch PVC roof drain is shown.
Okay. Does anyone from the public have any comment? Being none, Todd, and your people, do you have any more comment or information you wanna bring forth?
No, I think, you know, we have got some good feedback and direction on those, on the waivers in particular, you know, you'll have the revised plan, so if there's anything that you see on those, we can hopefully deal with that at the next meeting, and we'll circle back with Graves to get them to, you know, correspond and issue any additional comments that they may have. I think that's, I think that's really, that's really it from my perspective. Oh, the only other comment was going back to what would happen in the building, in the Building 2 area. Instead of looming and seeding and seeding it, I think, you know, we'd like to look at, you know, doing a compacted asphalt milling, you know, millings or grindings, 'cause it's gonna be on a temporary basis.
Right, but I mean, it could be 10 years or 20 years before you build a building, nobody knows for sure. But that would be a question for Bill Coyle, whether or not they could be grinding, compacted. And by putting that down, you just increase your impervious area.
Yeah, I mean, but it's all designed for, if it's designed for the building, that's impervious area as well, so that all the systems handle that. The stuff with roof in the same way is pretty much the only difference.
My only other question is, is all the wall pack lighting, I mean, you have plenty around the building, I just wonder how far that cascaded out? I know it doesn't go out past the property line. I'm just curious in what swath it actually lights up, 'cause they're fairly close together, I mean, they're not really way far apart, you have three in the front, three in the back. I just kinda keep...
Yeah, I don't know, Jay, if you have, you know, flow on...
Yeah, I can add, I can add the same type of illumination levels on those to show how far out they go.
Yeah, I realize, just for safety, walking in the parking lot at night or whatever, but I kinda like, yeah, three in the front, three in the back, that's pretty good. And you have the pole lights on the east side, so it's good as well. Okay, I believe, and anyone from the planning board can correct me if I'm wrong, that we'd all be willing to give you the waiver on the landscape architect stamp? Do I have any dissension on that between Ron?
I'm all set with it.
Okay, Todd, Steve?
Yeah, I'm okay if they're amenable to making sure it meets the comments from the engineers as well.
Okay, and Todd?
I agree with Mr. Chambers.
Okay, so I don't know why we can't take a vote on that now and just grant the waiver. So, may I have a motion to grant the architectural, not needing the architectural stamp on the landscape plan?
I'll make that motion, John.
May I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. We're all set for now, guys, we'll see you in two weeks, I guess.
Chair, do you wanna do the same with the lighting waiver request?
Oh, yeah, we can do that as well. May I have a motion to approve the lighting waiver as well?
I'll make the motion, John.
May I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. You granted both waivers, Todd.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else before we part ways for the evening?
No.
Do you wanna make a motion to continue the hearing?
Make a, yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
May I have a second?
For the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, in two weeks.
Next on the list is applicant SCLL Realty LLC at definitive subdivision plan for a 13-lot, single-family home development on the property located at 178 Hampton Street and 19 Eaton Ave., Ave. 12, Parcel 120. They have once again requested to continue, but they wanna continue to February...
Oh, ninth.
February 9th. May I have a motion to continue this to February 9th?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
To Todd, I'll second.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote, it will be continued to February 9th. Now, we're on to other business. I don't know if you've, everyone's had a chance to look at 50 Washington Street, was it Chapter 61 NOI? In regards to whether or not the town should, or we should recommend to the selectmen, whether the town should take first refusal on that and put a bid on that property that Eastland Partners wants at 50 Washington Street? Anybody have any discussion?
John, can I ask that Adam could maybe speak about that a little bit?
Sure.
Sure, I'll have to. So, the town received from the current owners of 50 Washington Street, their intent to sell the land to 90 Washington Auburn LLC, which is owned by Eastland Partners. Because this is Chapter 61 land, there are certain protections and certain laws that the town has required, it's MGL Law 61. Should bear with me, I'm trying to pull up some of the maps I put together, but the computer's acting really slow right now. So, the town has the right of first refusal, so that means the town could purchase this if it so chooses. Right now, we're going through the process of asking certain boards, including the planning board, conservation, it was before open space last night, and it will be before the Board of Selectmen, I think it was on their agenda last night, but it's going to be on their agenda at their next meeting, if the NAPL are open. Basically, what we're looking for from the planning board is their recommendation to either recommend the town pursue their right of first refusal or not recommend it. Open Space Committee voted last night to not recommend they pursue this. It will ultimately come down to a Board of Selectmen vote in a couple of weeks, but the town policy and state law requires it comes before the planning board.
For the chair, can I make some comments?
Absolutely, Steve, go ahead.
So, I'm on the Open Space Committee, so Bill Coyle was fortunate enough to be on, so the land does a butt, some of the Pappas land, as well as the Southhold land, but the Packard Hawk walking trail is not on this property, but it's pretty close to the corner of that, and we had some discussions, I mean, for the town to do anything, there's extensive work, it's sloped and it's quite a bit of wetland. Here come some of the maps. But essentially, there wasn't a whole lot of use or future use that we could see as a group, and again, with Bill being on there, he didn't have any, anything pressing where he thought we would need the land for anything, but just to give you some of that preference, so the aqueduct where that meets up with the walking trail in Pappas and stuff, there is eventually, or there could be potential for them to gift some of that land just before the wetlands back, but again, it was conversation, there was nothing ran in stone, but it looks like what they propose to do is develop the front portion right along Route 20, and the rest would remain, and that's what we were told last night, and that's one of the reasons we voted to recommend not pursuing the Chapter 61 land.
Does anyone else have any comment?
Uh, John, it's just my feeling that we should not pursue acquiring it by the town.
Todd, do you have anything to add, or?
Um, no, unless Adam has any insight into any uses that the town might have for this land, I would recommend not pursuing purchasing it. land, I would recommend not pursuing purchasing it.
At this point, as best by knowledge, town administration has not identified any particular use at this time. It is a challenging site. I apologize, my other maps I put together are not coming up. They show some of the details a little better. There's a lot of wetlands. I'd say almost a third of the land is wetlands, a couple of streams back there, and it's quite steep, so it would be extremely costly for the town to develop anything to access the backland. The only possible use is possibly walking trails, but that would have to be extended through wetterways, and there's no near-term or really long-term use plans at this point for this possible property. So right now, we don't see any particular use.
And just to make... No, go ahead.
Thanks, Adam.
And just to make sure everybody knows, this is going to be an industrial development. It's in an industrial area. So may I have a motion to...
Not recommend.
Not recommend the purchase of this land by the town?
This is Steve, I'll recommend that we make a mo, uh, I'll make a motion that we not recommend pursuing this land for...
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, John.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, the recommendation is voted on not to make a bid on this piece of land.
I will notify the Board of Selectmen through a memo this coming week.
Thank you, Adam. Next up is One Stop Convenience, 151 Auburn Street. I don't know if anybody realizes what that is. I believe it's the old Champagne's Market. It's right up pretty much across, directly across from Rockland Road on Auburn Street. And there has been a complaint from the abutting property of the Goddard School of water runoff from the new paving that's been done at that site. We all have a letter in a package from Caleb Moody, and he reviewed the complaint. He's found no evidence of any permits authorizing the conducted work. Given that, it's extremely difficult to determine the formal conditions and grades of the paved area. It is my recommendation that the applicant submit a plan detailing conditions and addressing any and all stormwater runoff, which I agree with. Does anybody have any comments regarding this site?
So it's Ronnie, John. So can we, I think, I'm not sure if it would be maybe a combination of Caleb and Bill Coyle to look at it and see what their thoughts are as the water been directed onto the school's property? And if so, try to get them to change it and, I don't know what, it's probably a civil matter after that.
It is, I believe, but it's wetlands behind those buildings anyway, between the Goddard School, the former One Stop Convenience, and the houses going toward the center.
Yeah, there's a brook, there's a brook that came coming down through there.
Correct. And I know when it rains, it backs up, but if there's more water going on the Goddard property than it was before, then it's this new owner's responsibility to provide a grading plan of what was put in. I mean, they just ripped up the blacktop and repaved it. I never saw a grade stake out there. So I don't know if they were doing it by laser or what, but I don't think so, if they're draining more water on the abutting property. I mean, there's a bunch of pictures in here that really don't tell you a lot. I mean, you can guess the way it's sloped.
So if work was done on it, then they should have a grading plan that we should be able to review?
Ah, they should ask for permit, because that would have...
Agreed. That would have alleviated all of this. So I think at a minimum, they should have to present that, and then we can look at remedies and see, because I don't know if the calculations make it true. I'm not witnessing the land, but obviously, a permit would have alleviated any complaints.
Yeah, well, you've got a site plan application, and listed in there is a keno parlor. Keno panels on the side. That's what he...
Through the chair, if there was to be a kind of keno parlor, keno lounge, that would change some of the use of the structure, which would trigger a site plan, site plan review.
Board, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. I am here representing the owner, Tracy Sharky, GBI, Eastland Street. So I'm here to answer a couple of questions and clarify the remedies, if you have some time. Did you want to go over anything?
Well, one, according to a letter from the building commissioner, they want you to submit a plan detailing conditions and addressing any of the stormwater runoff. You have to give us a grading plan, which was never, you never asked for a permit, and you never, which would have triggered you having to provide a grading plan, which you did not do. So if there's more water going on the abutter's property, whether it be, you know, toward the church, behind the store, toward the center of town, you're responsible for controlling that water.
Right, I agree. So we have proposed mitigation for immediately addressing the runoff, as well as a plan for the future, if we could present that at the next meeting. So I did speak with the abutter today. We met on site. There is a small portion that was running off. There was one significant rain event, and there has not been any obvious runoff since then. So I would propose, you know, within the week, a row of stakes for our waddles, just to ensure that nothing would be running in that direction anymore. It's the rear left of the property. The rest of the parking area is all draining into the existing catch basin. We also can provide the contract and the waste lift. The US Pavement Services Incorporated gave a call to excavate existing asphalt and re-sheave in same footprint. So it does look like the stormwater was redirected and was cleaned up on that left side. But we can provide those plans. And the owner, as well as the paving company, has told me that they will be working with the town to make sure that no runoff will go to the neighbor anymore.
Okay, does anybody have any comment, Ron?
So you're gonna appear, you're gonna have some kind of a plan or something for the next meeting?
Yeah, we can do, there's a plan detailing conditions addressing the stormwater, yes. I mean, the short term would be to take some erosion controls in that specific area where I saw evidence of sheet flow. There was that one rain event the end of November, that it seemed to be directed off the whole of the mulch area and the grass area. We would propose to six step location, that's the only location, that rear, and then come in with some remedy, once I speak with the paving company. But we would be looking for a recommendation to Caleb for a temporary occupancy permit. You know, the parking area to the right would be used for the customers, and he has received, the owner's received all the licenses. I'm also going to provide a summary of the activities for the use, like the board, one of the board members had mentioned. He's just gonna do the convenience store, just as it was before, lottery, groceries, tobacco, keno, with no keno sign at this time. And he has all the state licenses.
Okay, Steve, do you have any comments?
I'm looking forward to seeing the next meeting.
Todd?
I just wanted to confirm, yeah, I support putting in the erosion control now to prevent it. I want to confirm that you are going to apply for the permit that's required by the town to do the paving, and that at the next meeting, we're gonna see the paving, you know, the proposed mitigation that you're bringing forward. Are you seeking permission to occupy and start the business before all this is done?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want to speak for the other members. I would have a concern with that until we know that all these other issues are being addressed, seeing as though permits were not properly pulled in the past, and work was done without going through the proper channels.
I would ask for the board's consideration. The owner was just trying to spruce the place up as far as, you know, stormwater management, paving, causing a significant reduction in permeability or increase in runoff. There, I don't believe that occurred. I believe that he thought he was purchasing a replacement of that parking area, and multiple inspections had been done since November 24th, when it was paved, fine off. And I would request from the board some consideration on that. I mean, we can even rope off that area. We're working with the abutter. I met them out there today, and we're gonna ensure that no additional rain goes in that direction. And I would just, you know, he's done all the work, he's just trying to get opened. He's spent quite a bit of money, and this area of concern is nowhere near where the car parking. And as far as safety, you know, there's really no reason shouldn't be able to open as far as his occupancy.
Unfortunately, the board has no...
Through the chair, is that part of our...
It's not part of our thing, Steve. We cannot approve or disapprove of temporary or permanent occupancy permit. But I would like to inform you that had he gone through the proper channels, he wouldn't be in the position he's in now. And if you think waddles are gonna stop water from going on the other property, that's not what a waddle does. A waddle filters the soil out of the water, the water's still gonna go under the, the water's still gonna go under the waddle. That does nothing, absolutely nothing.
So we've got some silk fence as well. There's a chain link fence that the pavement is touching. We did not want to anything up, but if we cannot place any erosion controls, I mean, if you have a suggestion, I would be happy to give that to the owner. And the only reason why I'm bringing the temporary occupancy, I spoke with Caleb, and he said that he's going to take, you know, the board's consideration into play with that temporary occupancy. And I think we're here tonight showing some good faith that we're going to make it better. We're going to make good on the mistake.
Caleb hasn't approached us yet or sent us a letter regarding that, whether he were on in our opinion on whether or not to recommend that you get a temporary occupancy permit. So until we get that, our hands are tied. But just so you know, when they ripped up the parking lot, they put no erosion control up around the site. There's nothing there, nothing. And they never put a grade stake in the ground to grade it properly. No one even checked. So that's why you have trouble.
What was it being installed? So, I am the abutter to make sure that we remedy the situation.
The abutter's on...
And the owner's willing to fix whatever needs to be done to open his business.
Does the abutter have any comment regarding this water issue?
Yeah, Joe Martin and I represent Packard Hawk Acres. Just for the record, it's not the Goddard School, it's Packard Hawk Acres daycare at 141 Auburn Street. And yes, I did meet Tracy today, and I thought it was, I thought she was very productive. She was very understanding. So, but two things. Number one is, the impervious area absolutely has been increased, not by a lot, but the areas that it is is really what I feel is causing this to come onto the property. And another gentleman was there, and I didn't get his name, but he was there, like, oh, just throw a curb up there. But I said, where's the water gonna go? Because you, as you mentioned, there's that intermittent stream in the back with the wetlands. And I really can, and the two things, number one is coming across my property into the driveway, coming right out on Auburn Street, on the other side of a catch basin on Auburn Street. So some of you probably remember years ago, before I bought that land, and the snow would melt, it would go on Auburn Street and freeze, and that was a horrible area. I have a big concern about that, and I have a big concern about that whole intermittent stream. When Tracy and I met today, I mean, it was filled to the top, and that thing has been flowing for almost five years with no issues. And so those are my two concerns, is Auburn Street and that intermittent stream.
I would recommend that the owner and his paver or whatever get together with Caleb and go out there and actually look at it, make an appointment with Caleb, get his opinion on what you think you can do. You just can't put a berm up because it's gonna hold water, and then you're gonna have a big puddle out there, and then you're gonna have mosquitoes, you're gonna have more complaints. So you may have to add paving to slope that up so it comes, I don't know if there's a catch basin in that lot or not, but you can't have it go out and drain on Auburn Street either.
I would say that the proposed mitigation would be removal pavement and maybe a rip rap swale, but I would have to have the calculations completed and the grading and sloping measured, so. But I think we propose take away more so than to add anything.
Yeah, that'll have to be brought before the board, before that work is done, I believe.
That, to the chair, with all the grading, a site plan review is probably worthwhile. That's what was recommended in the building commissioner's letter, is a site plan review. So we know what's going on with the drainage issues and what's actually going to happen will be done properly. You don't want to just piecemeal anything together.
Right. What an overall...
Are you on January 7th, abutter?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Are you speaking about the building inspector, abutter, from January 7th?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, he didn't mention a site plan review, just submitted a plan detailing the conditions.
Well...
John?
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
You have to listen to Mr. Martin, and just going through this in my mind, I think it's, you know, we don't want to prevent anybody from opening the store, but still, it's, I think, serious enough with what Joe described as the water going out onto South, Auburn Street, and as you said, you're not gonna prevent it with swales or, you know, anything like that. And then I think it needs to be resolved amongst a bunch of people and have an absolute plan that can correct it, so it's no different than it was prior to.
I agree.
Okay, so I would suggest that you would contact Caleb and maybe even the town engineer, Bill Coyle, the DBW director, I mean, or one of the town engineers that we have, and come together with a resolution, and you still have to present the site plan to us with a grading plan, so we can make sure that the problem has been taken care of properly.
Okay.
So if you need to, or plan on getting on the meeting in two weeks, you have to have all your information into us by the prior Thursday to that meeting, or else it'll get postponed to the following meeting. Just to give you a heads up.
So you want a full filing for a site plan review?
Yeah.
Under which section? 9.4.3?
I'm not sure what section it goes under.
Yeah, probably 9.4, I can double check. Usually, it's 9.4. I can confirm that afterwards.
Okay, so the board would consider this enough of a difference to require full on-site plan review?
Well, it should have been done to begin with, before anything was done over there. It should have been a site plan review, it should have been brought before... it should have been a site plan review, it should have been brought before the planning board, so we could have reviewed the grades to make sure you didn't have the problem you have now, so now you gotta do it, even if it's just for record.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comment? Being none, I, there was no hearing opened or closed, or there's nothing really to open or close here, I'm just gonna move on to our next subject matter for discussion, and that would be the...
Thank you, Board, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the reserve at Ashworth Hill subdivision lot, release 1, 2, 3, and 4, and parcel A, B, and C. Does anybody have any comment on this? Ron?
I don't have my package with me, I left it at work, but Adam, can you just spin through it quick?
Sure. The bond that was voted upon by the board last month, the 281,000, the town received, that, a copy of the bond, not a copy, received the bond, I forgot, I forgot it was last week, the week prior, that is on file with the town clerk, so the bond is fully in place. I don't see a reason to withhold any, and the lot releases, we have, we're covered on our end.
All right, so you're all right with us releasing those lots?
Yes.
Thank you.
Steve, do you have anything to add? Todd?
I do not.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Being none, I think you need a motion to approve the release of these lots.
I'll make a motion to approve the release of the lots based on the receiving of the bond.
Well, we already have the bond.
Yep, okay, sorry.
Second?
This is Todd, I'll second.
All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of 12:08, 2020?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. Does the town planner have any update, or is no unforeseen stuff for the Chair, so...
I don't really have anything at this time, though.
Being none, and no town planner update, nothing unforeseen by the Chair, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion, I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Steve seconds.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. Thank you for being here, and I'd like to wish everybody a very happy and healthy and safe New Year.
Thank you, John, and everybody else, Todd, and Steve, Adam, Rachel.
Thanks.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year. Have a great night, guys. And girls.
Night.